It's so fun to have a packed house here at the County Commission. We did move the time of this meeting, oh, I'm sorry, let me just introduce the meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, March 5th, 2020. The time of the meeting is 5:30 so that we could accommodate the girls who are in the room. We will be swearing in the new women and girls to the Commission on Women and Girls, and the girls couldn't make it to a 1 o'clock meeting. And so, we decided to move the time, so we are just delighted that you're here. We're going to get to that, and we're kind of saving the best for last, in a way, no offense to everybody else. But, we're just, we're so excited that you're here to join us tonight. So, we're going to try to deal with some of the other business and then get to the recognition and the swearing in. So, by way of introduction, Leslie Hervey is at my far right. Next to her is Jackie Pianiotto, Clerk to the Board. Victoria Parks, County Commissioner, is to my right. To my left is Vice Chair of the Board, Stephanie Summerodumas. To her left is Jeff Aluto, he's the County Administrator, and our Legal Counsel is Michael Friedman, to my far left. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand if you can. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session?
Second. Mr. Greathouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summerodumas?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to, we've got a public hearing that was scheduled for 5:30, so we're just about on time. So, why don't we move to the public hearing, hearing to consider the vacation of the right of way on Simonson Road in Harrison Township. I know we've got, and I, we've moved the podium, I know, over to the side. Please introduce yourselves and lay out the issue for us.
I'm Bob Highcamp, Dippity County Surveyor. Today, we have a public hearing involving a portion of easement right of way on Simonson Road, Harrison, Ohio. I know all the Board, and there's other copies floating around of the vacation, the actual vacation. The Engineer's Office has submitted a report which states the documents submitted are acceptable, and the Engineer's Office recommends a vacation. The property owner, Erica Price, is here, and I think she would like to say a few words regarding the vacation.
Thank you, and we are going to need, did you fill out a speaker's card?
No.
Okay, we're going to ask you to do that after you speak, and you've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for hearing our case. We've been trying to, working on this, I, for probably the past five years. The county wasn't interested for a while, and then we had several systems. Our property's 160 years old, and a new road was paved on Harrison Avenue at the end of 2018. And, we believe that that is what pushed our old septic system and our old Cistern over its edge. They were both very old systems. So, all year, we've been working on trying to get permits and get these new systems in place. We were finally able to get the well at the very end of the year, but the septic, the new septic system, they say, has to go over the easement onto the other side of the property, that that's the only place we have enough room for, to have a new system. So, we are asking for the vacation of the easement so that we're able to move forward with our new septic system to, you know, make the place better. And, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And please, the speaker's cards are in the back of the room. Thank you. Are there, is there anybody else here to speak to this issue as part of the public hearing? So, we've got one person in favor of the item, so help us along here. Is it our next action to close the public hearing? And, you will offer us some legislation at a future meeting. If you wouldn't mind coming back up, as we usually do, could you please help us understand what outreach happened to the members in the community in the near vicinity of this, or what the process looked like?
Basically, we send out notices about the public hearing to the budding property owners, and we also obviously contact all the utility companies, everything like that, to make sure, and all the other government agencies, planning and development, people like that, to make sure we're all in agreement with this stuff. Harrison Township, everybody. And then, we start setting up the paperwork to come through, to get to this point.
Was there any opposition?
No. No, actually, there was, there was some questions right before the meeting, we got that all cleared out with a gentleman.
Okay.
So, you know, there was some misunderstanding of what was going on, but yeah.
Okay.
Everybody seems to be fine with it.
Are there any comments or questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, very good. Then, I'm going to move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Greathouse?
Yes.
Mr. Summerodumas?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And if you could bring us the resolution at our, I guess in a week's time, we'll deal with that at our next meeting. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Actually, you already have it, it's already set for next, the March 12th hearing.
Well, there you go. Look how efficient we are. Okay, very good. Thank you all for being here. All right, we have, are we ready yet? Okay. We've got a couple of folks that would have filled out speaker's cards related to an MSD issue. There are four speakers, and I've been asked to call you in the order that I receive them, which I will do. So, Sue Wilkie is first. These are all related to a Northside flooding event that happened a number of months ago. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
My name is Sue Wilkie. I live at 1708 Martha Avenue in Northside. My partner and I are in our 70s, and we built our modest home so that we could successfully age in place. We are two of the victims of the June 16th backups and overflows caused by MSD's operation of CSO 125. A few of my neighbors and I are here to tell you directly what the MSD is doing about our claims, and to be sure you know that the MSD is doing this in your name. I have provided several documents for you to review, including two letters sent to the County and City Administrator about these problems, and a flood mitigation grant that I will briefly discuss. After my neighbors and I filled out detailed claims, the MSD is refusing to even consider paying entire categories of our damage. MSD is saying that people have to give up their right to protect the future value of their home in order to be compensated for the lost personal property and to fix the damages caused by the June 16th event. What is worse, after flooding us, the MSD further harmed our property by filling out a grant application within weeks of the incident, with the state of Ohio saying that my home and the homes of most of my neighbors needed to be bought, demolished, and the ground returned to natural state. To add insult to further injury, the MSD used ridiculous property values that did not even reflect what I paid for the property initially, let alone the value of our improvements. You have this application in the handouts we provided. The three events that are the basis for the application are all events that occurred after the drainage in our area was modified to build CSO 125. It is an incontrovertible fact that the failure of the Kirby Basin caused the inundation that damaged my property on June 16th, and that the MSD's grant application further stigmatized my property. You need to take action to fix this situation, so we can be made whole. Thank you.
Our next speaker, I believe it's Mike Collins, is that correct? Got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Mike Collins. My mother and uncle live at 4365 Virginia Avenue in Northside. You may recall, my uncle was the person who was on TV, being floated out on his air mattress. I want to build on what Sue Wilkie just said. CSO 125 includes the Kirby Basin that broke, causing the June 16th overflows, and the Martha Basin, which also overflowed. I personally witnessed the June 16th backups and overflows as they were happening. I observed many changes to the basin the MSD made in the days and weeks following June If the MSD did not know what went wrong, how did the MSD know what to remove and change? Yet, the MSD has not given the public the information about what happened. My mother's home was almost totally destroyed by the MSD's actions. In attention to the destruction of much of the house, there were extremely high mold counts that are dangerous to human life. Yet, the MSD will not pay for the mold remediation, even though we have offered to provide complete copies of our mold testing reports done by an independent contractor. On top of that, MSD told the state of Ohio that my mother's house needed to be demolished because she lived in a flood-prone area. I ask you to put yourself in my mother's shoes.
Thank you.
How would each of you feel if MSD told you that your home needed to be demolished, but that its future value could not be protected because you have to sign a release? How would you feel if that release made you choose between protecting your future value of your home and putting your home back together after it had been destroyed? What do you think a future buyer can pay for your house, knowing the sewer district has said the property needs to be demolished? Yet MSD is determining all of these awful choices in the name of the city and the name of the county. We need you to step in and correct these problems, because according to court findings, the city and the MSD are agents, and you own the sewer system that MSD managed in such a way as to cause the June 16th backups.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. And I am going to ask the solicitor, or the prosecutor, to weigh in after we hear from all four speakers. Our next speaker is Mike Dorsey. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me testify today. My name is Mike Dorsey. I own property at 4385 Virginia Avenue in Northside. Just as I was going to put my house on the market, it was destroyed on June 16th, inundation caused by flooding and backups when CSO 125 broke. Not only could we not sell our house, but the city declared the property destroyed. On top of that, my insurance company canceled my homeowner's insurance, and no other insurance company would provide insurance on a property destroyed by flood. Having homeowner's insurance is a condition of my mortgage, so I had to buy expensive, virtually worthless insurance from my mortgage company to keep them from foreclosing. I testified publicly about this situation many months ago, and MSD and the city have been directly aware of our problem all this time. Yet, after we filed an extensive, highly detailed claim, the MSD did not offer us a single penny to correct our property value, because the damage to our house was so extensive. The MSD did not even offer to compensate us for the value of our house, destroyed, so we are left paying two mortgages while we consider our options. I want to emphasize that the city saw the house, inspected it, photographed it, and right afterwards, right after the incident. I cannot understand why the city and the county have not offered to buy a house that MSD destroyed, when the city and MSD have known all the facts for so many months. The letter received from MSD last Friday makes it appear that MSD has never bought this problem, has never brought this problem to the attention of city, of county, and that the county can only decide to buy the property. So, I beg the county to step up and end this nightmare by working with our lawyer to compensate us for personal property damage and the fair value of our real estate. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Marzelle Wilkerson. Good evening.
I'm the property owner at 1704 Martha Avenue in Northside. I am 73-year-old widow and suffer from a disability. My largest and my only asset is my house. In June 16th event caused extensive damage to my personal property outside my house and in my yard. I am shocked and surprised. My house was listed that needs to be demolished by MSD flood grant application filed with Ohio. We were not told about this in July of 2019 application, and now we have a stigma attached to our properties, producing our houses to nothing. We do not understand why MSD tried to keep this secret. We did not think about, did not think about the impact on our lives. I am also concerned that MSD has repeatedly promised to provide explanation of the June 2019 incident, but they have never produced any report, anything of any facts for the people in Northside. We have repeatedly requested this information so that we can evaluate how we best to protect our values of our homes in the face of MSD twin assaults on our homes. In light of this, I hope you understand how outrageous this is, that MSD has chose, makes, tries to make us choose before recovering our personal property damage and protecting our fair market value of our greatest asset, my home. We need the county desperately to step in and immediately resolve this issue with us, so that we can keep our, keep our homes and be made whole.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here. So, Michael, could you please weigh in on the status of, you know, what we're being asked to do here?
Yeah, I guess I'm not exactly sure what's being asked tonight, but in terms of the status, I certainly can update you. Charlie Anis from the Prosecutor's Office has been working on this and can, with the Solicitor's Office, and they've been dealing with, I understand each speaker tonight has been represented by an attorney, and there's a process that is involved with that, that has been worked out, and they're in that process right now. My understanding is that the attorneys have been discussing this, and there have not come to an agreement yet. But, further than that, I don't know what more we can report at this time, because it is being discussed by those that are handling that, both the attorneys for the county, the city, and the attorneys for the speakers here today. In terms of the status of the report, I can ask Mr. Anis about that. I don't know the status of that, to be quite honest with you, if they've finalized that. I know that MSD had indicated they were looking into it. If anything has been finalized, I'm not sure, but we can look into that and have Mr. Anis get back to the Board about that.
Okay. So, we have discussed, I'm trying to pick you out of the crowd here. We have discussed this in the past, and we know that that was a devastating flood that happened a while back, and I know you're all represented by an attorney, and so, I feel as though we are unable to say much because of your legal representation, and it's working its way through the system, but we understand your concerns. And so, if there's anything that we could, I just don't have anything further than that because of the legal process that's taking place. So, we appreciate you coming in. Are there any questions or comments from the other members?
I have no questions.
I just want you all to know that we have, when we met with you last year, that we heard you, and in light of the action, that all we can do now is wait.
Given the legal issues involved, so, so thank you all for coming in. We appreciate you weighing in on that topic. We have a special recognition, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Summerodumas.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe that Ms. Turner and Jalen Turner are out in the hallway, they weren't able to find a seat. Okay, they can come in. So, I'm just very proud this evening. My fellow colleagues have also agreed that we need to recognize this young lady. If you could come up to the podium, because I wanted to make sure that it was a timely recognition, and also that we hear so much about young people not doing good things. And so, you can see by the audience and here, there are a lot of young people that are doing great things, but when I heard about Jalen, I just wanted to make sure that we recognized her in the county, and that's her mom, Ms. Turner. So, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. And this is a proclamation recognizing 13-year-old Jalen Turner for her unselfish heroic act by the Board. Whereas this proclamation recognizes Jalen Turner for her heroic act, and whereas Jalen attends Schroeder-Paidia School, where her favorite subject is social studies, and whereas she definitely wants to attend college, but has not decided which one she will attend, and whereas her love and passion is dance, and she is co-captain of Three Dimensions of Dance, and whereas Jalen loves hanging out with family and friends, and her mother says she has always been one to help others, whereas on the evening of Wednesday, February the 19th, proved to be a day that would change her life forever, and her heroic act saved the lives of many as random bullets were being fired all around her and her friends. And now, therefore, at 13-years-old, Jalen, you possess a heart of gold, and you were so concerned for the safety of other young girls, you placed your life in harm's way. Taking no regard for your own life, Jalen, you were shot in the back as you made sure the girls were safe. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognize Friday, March the 6th, as Jalen Taylor Day in Hamilton County, which is signed by all And we made sure to make it Friday. We know today is Thursday, but we wanted you to have the whole day. So, we will allow you to say a few things, and then the Commissioner may want something to say also.
Ms. Turner, I think you said Taylor.
What did I say?
Taylor.
Oh, well, it's right on here. Okay, so, Jalen Turner, okay.
I don't know what I was supposed to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1394.33][1394.33][applause]
Come on over, and we're going to give you the specific. Okay, wait, come this way. We have to shake your hand and congratulate you.[1410.14][1410.14][laughter]
And don't forget also, would you like to say something?
I really appreciate, you know, because that was kind of like the worst call ever. It was like the worst day, and also the best day, too, because it's true. Okay. So, yeah. So, thank you guys so much.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Okay, very emotional. All right, so we will then move on to comments and motions by Commissioners? Yeah. Commissioner Summerodumas.
Okay, I'm still watching her walk.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, just a few comments, Madam President. I did want to make a comment about, as I was reading about the gas tax increase that had happened. Nobody likes an increase, but due to the, due to the gas tax increase, we were able to increase the number of roads that we're able to repair, so I thank you guys from the Engineering Department. It went from $2 million to $4 million we can now use to repair roads, so I was just really excited about that. And rather than going through everything I've done in the last couple of weeks, I just wanted to say, my primary focus for the last two weeks has been to present, present some proclamations in behalf of the Commission, of course, which we oftentimes do. The Boys and Men Initiative, we continue to work on that with more, we're, and some, we have some contact persons over at JFS. And also, looking at the status of the SPCA, and what direction we're going to go as it relates to contracts in the Sheriff Department, and if we're going to proceed in that way. And also, the Millennium bidding process, continuing to watch that very closely, to see how that turns out, and what we're doing as we look at development of that hotel. And, of course, MSD issues continue to be on the forefront of my mind, and just continuing to read and research where we are as it relates to MSD issues. And I continue to complete the, my Leadership Academy, which is halfway through, and so, really excited about that. Great benefit, and my Chief of Staff went to the National Commissioners, you'll talk about that conference earlier this week, and so, I'm sure he was able to find out some great things and some interesting things to build his leadership ability, so. Also, I wanted to announce that the Family Children and Children First Council, which is very important, it has a lot of money that goes through this council, their partnership with other social service agencies. We're looking for parents that may have a child who is involved in the JFS system in some way. We need two parent representatives on that council, so if you're interested, please call my office, (513) 946-4410, and leave a message, and we'll talk to you more about what that is all about. And, other than that, Madam President, I do have two things I want to talk about as it relates to the consent agenda items as we go through.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Parks?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have two things. One is to announce that the State of the County address is coming up. I thought I mentioned this at a previous meeting, but maybe I did not. So, it's on April 2nd, 2020, at Memorial Hall. Doors open at 5:00, address will be at 5:30. Sorry, handy invitations, I have a few copies up here. But, this is kind of, it's like the State of the City or the State of the Union, it's just an update, kind of a report card on what we've been doing here at the county in the last year. We have it every year, and last year, we had one that was open to the public, it's free, there are beverages served, we'll have a little light snacks afterwards, so everyone is welcome to attend, and we're really looking forward to talking about the story of the county, and you all will be included in that story. And so, that's something to look forward to, I just want to make sure it's on everybody's radar. And then, secondly, we've got a resolution related to the opioid issue, and I'm going to go through this very quickly, because I don't want to delay too much, given the presentation we've got coming. We have been working over the last few months to try to come together in the state of Ohio to, because we, many of us have sued the distributors of opioids, given the devastation that's happened in our community, particularly when it comes to county services related to the JLJFS, the court system. And so, we sued a while back, as did other counties and other municipalities. So, the Governor, the AG, and other local jurisdictions, we've all been working to try to come to a resolution of how we could move forward. We are at the precipice of that right now, the deadline is tomorrow, to sign on to a memorandum of understanding amongst all of the above. And to put it in a nutshell, if we do get dollars from the settlement, they will just be distributed in a way where 15% goes to the state, 55 goes into a long-term foundation, and 30 goes down to local governments. So, we will get a share of that 30% to continue to do some of the work that we've been doing in this community to save lives and get people into long-term recovery. But, this is something that we wanted to do formally as a Board. As I said, the deadline is tomorrow. I did do some homework today, and many of other Boards and Commissions are passing similar resolutions all over the state, and so, I think it's very likely that this will move forward. I did do some homework today, and many of other boards and commissions are passing similar resolutions all over the state. And so I think it's very likely that this will move forward, but I just wanted to make sure that this board had an opportunity to do something formal at our meeting today. So that is, it's, it's an item in your by-leaf packet. And are there any questions or comments related to the resolution?
No questions.
No questions.
Anything I missed, Michael?
I think you covered.
Okay.
And I would say that Cooper Bowen from our office is here as well.
Oh, I didn't see you, Cooper.
If you'd like any more explanation, oh, I think you did a great job, so I don't feel there's anything to add.
The commissioner is as well versed in this as I am.
Well, and I'm not an attorney, I just want to say, so. Well, thank you, though, for being here, I didn't see you in the room, or I may, I may have called you forward. But anyway, all right, so let's go ahead and take some action here. So I'm going to move that we pass the resolution approving one Ohio memorandum of understanding between Board of County Commissioners, the state of Ohio, through its Attorney General and Governor, and other local governments for the purpose of resolving opioid litigation.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Cooper, for being here, I appreciate it. All right, very good. We have, and I, we don't have that much more, I promise. So we have another by-leaf item from the administrator, or it's the, one from the engineer's office, I believe, about the rezoning. Yeah, this was.
This was from zoning, this was from last week, I believe. This is the authorizing a zoning map amendment for case green, 2020-01, lead court retail from C residence to E planned retail.
Right, so we had a public hearing about this, there was no opposition to this change.
Correct.
And so we asked Planning and Development to come forward with the resolution, that's what's in front of us tonight. Are there any questions or comments related to the resolution?
No questions.
No questions.
I'm going to move that we approve of a resolution authorizing a zoning map amendment for case green, 2020-01, lead court retail from C residence to double E planned retail.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Administrator, anything further?
No, nothing of formal note, just, I did just want to take this opportunity, given the, we had talked in our staff meeting about a coronavirus update earlier on this week, and obviously we're getting, starting to get into the, into the time when we have severe weather alerts and things like that, and the fact that we have a full house tonight, maybe more people watching at home, just want to take this opportunity once again, as we always do, to plug alerthc.org. So people are in Hamilton County and want to find out a way to get, to subscribe to messages about any kind of alert or emergency situation going on in the county and in their particular community, they can go to www alerthc.org and sign up for being notified of whether it's tornadoes, flooding, chemical spills, municipal emergencies, you name it, anything that could possibly be of an emergency matter in the community, you can sign up to get alerts in the way that you would like to receive them. And while you're on that site, also have the ability to sign up for Smart 911, which is a way to place vital personal information on file proactively with our first responder community. So if you do ever have to call 911, they're responding in a way where they know medical information, household information, so that they can serve your needs a lot quicker. And that data is obviously kept in a very secure manner as well. So I did just want to plug that, since we had a full house. But other than that, Commissioner, Madam President, nothing further.
Thank you. And yeah, we did have an update about the coronavirus at our last meeting, and we are going to get those periodic updates as needed. So if there's anything to report by next Tuesday at our staff meeting, we will have another update.
Correct.
If not, then we will delay that until time needed. So that's kind of top of mind for many people in the community. By the way, what we heard was you need to wash your hands, cough into your elbow, and stay away from people that are sick. So there you go. But, but, yeah, I, I don't mean to sound flip about it, but, but the, the community is closely monitoring the situation. We have emergency management practices in place in case we were to face any kind of emergency in the community. So I, I hope that reassures people that we are ready in case something does happen. So let's move then to the regular agenda. We've got two items from the engineer's office, items two and three. Please give us an outline of these.
Good evening, commissioners. Item number two is vacation of easement of right-of-way on Simonsen Road in Harrison Township, that is what you already discussed. And item number three is the authorization to go to bid for the Harrison Road improvement. This is on Harrison Avenue from Westman Road to Philview Circle. This was previously before the board for the establishment, and there's been modifications and corrections to the plan since the establishment. So this is to go out to bid.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments related to items two or three?
No questions.
No questions.
I'm going to move that we approve of items two and three, on the regular agenda.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Eric, appreciate it. All right, we're going to move to the consent agenda items. There are items four through 13, are there any questions or comments related to these items?
Thank you, Madam President, not to belabor the evening, so I'll do this a little differently. On item five, and I don't need the answers this evening, as I usually do, but item five about the trade-ins, I noticed there were three trade-ins, but in the resolution, there were only two listed. So I'd like to know what the third trade-in is through the Sheriff Department. Secondly, items six, seven, eight, nine, and 11, all, are all JFS items where we are providing services for young people, either in foster care, residential care, and I had asked a couple of weeks ago, if I would like to know if they're out-of-town placements or not. I don't need that tonight, but I'm trying to keep track of whether or not we're going out of town to, to provide the placement for young people. So those are my only concerns.
Okay.
And Madam President, commissioners, on, so we'll provide the information on both those, on the trade-ins, and also on the, the locations of the placements. As it relates to the locations of the placements, we did discuss that in one of our pre-agenda meetings, and we're working on a process for how we go about making sure that it's clear where the placement is, because sometimes, as you know, the headquarters may be in one place, and the actual placement may be in another. So we're working on a protocol for that, and we will get that remedied here shortly. But I'll get you the information tomorrow as well, on these specific placements.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Commissioner? All right, so you're good to go, though? Okay, okay, very good. So I'm going to move then that we approve of the consent agenda items four through 13.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right, our last item is item number one on the regular agenda. Thank you for your patience, thank you for your deference to my colleagues. So we are swearing in the newest members of the Commission on Women and Girls. This is the third iteration of the commission. It was started a couple of years ago. It's been my pleasure to be the organizer, really, the convener of a bunch of women and girls who are fired up about serving this community and have great ideas, and so the commission is really driven by the women and girls that serve on the commission. And so we are, as you know, 10 women remain from last year, there are 10 new women being sworn in, and then 10 girls that are being sworn in. The girls rotate every year. I just very want to quickly, quickly say that the county administrator provided us with a work product related to the prior recommendations, from, very quick work, I must say, because we just had the recommendations at the end of last year. So we have a memo to work off of moving into the next grouping of women and girls. So this will provide a nice basis, I think, but then we will add to it and build upon it as we have done in previous years. So this is available, Fatima, oh, Alex's, Alex, raise him again, Alex has got him. So if you're interested in this, it talks about some of the recommendations, remember, they were related to a pay equity pledge, to gender balance on the boards and commissions, menstrual equity or with period products. We talked a lot about victims of domestic violence and gender-based violence, there were two recommendations related to that. And then one that talked about community gatherings to talk about affordable housing, particularly as it relates to women in our community. And so we have the administrator's recommendations related to all of that, and so we will be taking that up sooner than later with the commission. So I do want to point out that we have done a little bit of work here in the meantime.
Madam President, if I could just very quickly, not, I'm not going to go into the details on the, on the work product at this point, only just to say, just to thank the board and the commission for engaging the administration on it. We had a lot of different folks throughout the administration who provided some input into this, whether it's in human resources, the budget office, the administration, other departments, and they're just really excited about the, the request and the work that the commission did, and the ability to engage with this commission in this way. So thank you for that, and we'll look forward to talking with you about the specific recommendations in the future.
Very good. And as a reminder, and Victoria, you will remember this as well as anybody, so to the very, at the very beginning, from the first commission, one recommendation was that we have more balance on the boards to which we appoint people. And in the first couple of years since that recommendation, 77% of the people that we have appointed to boards and commissions have either been people of color or women. So we are very proud of that work. We continue to do it. It's something that we, we need to be intentionally reminding ourselves of and doing as we continue to put people on boards and commissions. And the second one was something that was implemented right away. If you apply for a job at the county, you will not be asked about your pay history, because if you do that, so oftentimes, women are making less than men, and so we perpetuate this cycle where women are going to continue to be paid less than men. And so if you apply for a job at the county, you are not asked that question. So we have very simple things that are very meaningful that have been implemented because of the work on the Commission on Women and Girls. And, and this period product thing from the girls was, we're rocking and rolling on that. And Mike Morosky at the school board, and Jeff Pastor at City Hall are ready to get moving on that one as well. So we're very excited that you're here, we're anxious to swear you in and give you your pen, we're going to pin you tonight. So we're going to move to the front of the room. Rena Saperstein, who is one of the commissioners, is going to read off the names as you, and then as she reads your name, please come forward, and we will line up here in the front of the room. So you'll just come forward, get your certificate, and just move over here, so we'll collect. All right, I am starting with girls, starting with girls. Starting with girls. First name, Abigail Murray. We've got Mangle and Meng, so Meng first and then Mangle. Claire Meng and Claire Mangle. All right, Sylvia Maloney-Noyes. And now we have the women. Andrea Bertels was not able to be here today. Okay, that's it. That's it. All right, so, thank you, ladies and girls, and congratulations to all of you. We will be contacting you shortly about the first meeting and getting going with the work. So that is the last item on our agenda. Is there anything more for the good of the cause?
Yes, please.
All right, I'm going to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm moved that we approve of item number one.
Second.
Yes.
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 All right, now I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right, we're adjourned, let's go have some cake, thank you.